Excludes the non-residential portions of it.
So we only consider the non-residential, sorry, the residential but not the non-residential is not accounted for.
Not in the, in the units per acre. So we don't use FAR or anything like that. We only are counting, determining residential density here and it's spread over the entire property. Same thing similar here at, at city center. So this is a 25 acre mixed-use development. You've got the four rent units out front as well as Boise. Those were all of those units were spread over the full 25 acres of, of the city center property, which comes out to a density of it's about eight units per acre. If you looked at Boise just by itself, it would have a much higher density. If you looked at apartments just by itself, it would have a much higher density. But our code in those zoning districts allow for the density to be spread over the entire property.
Let me just again clarification, what is the significance of that data point? If, if the non-residential does not matter for comparison purposes?
Well, I think that it, it just, it encourages people to create these instead of just doing a standalone development with just one use and it, it does encourage people to do multiple uses. And we do encourage that especially within the downtown.
So we are trying to promote mixed use is what you're saying?
Sure. And we're trying to promote walkability and reduce vehi- vehicle trips, especially in the downtown. So having those mix of uses in close proximity is something that we are trying to achieve.
I'm still trying to, I'm struggling regarding the comparison when we don't consider just the area occupied. But that's a discussion for another day. Maybe the other commissioners understand that. Maybe we can discuss that at some other time.
Sure.
The, the other question I have is, I know the human behavior has changed significantly during COVID whereby a lot of people are wanting to walk from home. And it seems to me that we may need to look at the way we, we have zoned our future, future large use codations and really promotes mixed use. Regardless as to what we may see as the density, because this was office, zoned office. Is that the zoning currently?
No, the current zoning is R12. So that's a family detached zoning district.
It's R12, but we are doing a greater density in the downtown live work with mixed use component on it, which seems to fit what is happening in a human behavior today.
Sure.
When is the next review or revision of the comprehensive large use plan?
So the current, the 2040 Horizon 2040 Comprehensive Plan, we just, council just adopted that last year, October, end of October of 2021. So we're about, we're a little over a year into that and we update the comprehensive plan every five years. So we've got about four, probably about three years and we'll start, you know, looking into the planning process.
Five, yeah.
Yeah.
So we are likely to see a lot of requests like this because again, depending on what happens after COVID completely dies off and people are, we are getting used to walking from home. Well, I'm not, but a lot of people are.
The good thing is that we did, our last comp plan effort was during COVID. So, and some people were, had already kind of changed the way that they were, you know, living and, and working. So we did get a little bit of that during that last planning effort.
What's the approximate percent of office occupancy in Alpharetta?
I'm not familiar with that, but I bet Ms. Cook might know the answer to that.
Just out of curiosity.
Overall, it's about an 18% vacancy. So we have, of course, we have other areas that are higher. Brookside, we just went through adoption of the Brookside plan. So that's in the 30%.
You said 18%?
18% overall with 20 million square feet of office. And we have other areas within Alpharetta, of course, that are higher. If you look at Brookside Park, it's around 31 to 35% vacancy. So there are definitely areas that are higher.
So we have a lot of empty offices?
Yes. So you, you want your office vacancy to be, you know, 10% or lower is a great number to strive for. So we're between 18% to 21% averaging in Alpharetta.
So 80, 80, the 80% occupancy, that, that's, that's good. That's very good. Cause I'm seeing areas where they have 50%.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. All right. That's it for me.
Um, Michael, I just have a couple of quick questions. So I, good, good understanding. I now understand the difference in the landscape strips. One side's five, one side's 10. One of the questions I do have is the timing of this. Little concerned that all the residential would go in and then you'd have, I couldn't, when I visited the site this week, I couldn't quite understand what was going on with the other property because that big open space in the front. Now I do. Is there any in our conditions, any tie-in to having, you know, the office go in, the residential go in, the timing of those? Is that something we've done in the past or?
We have not done that in the past and the zoning does not require that. So this zoning district would allow for just residential to be developed within that property. They could have done just, just commercial office on this property or they could do both uses. And that's what they've chosen to do here is both. We have not tied, so concurrency requirements are usually related to mixed-use developments, MU zoning, where you have four-rent product. That is where we will tie or have concurrency for the rental units and tie it to office. We have not taught, done any kind of concurrency or, or tie uses together in the downtown zoning districts.
Cause I think the attractiveness of this property is so much of the green space left, the trees being maintained. So, you know, it would become a very empty lot feel if you didn't develop the front half at the same time. So, you know, the amenity side is tied to that front being done. And so I think it would lose a lot of the overall.
So if the develop, if the developer, and I think we need to ask the developers his plan about phasing, if they're going to do it all at once or if they're going to do one use before the other. But what I will say is that if the developer decided to develop the townhomes at the rear of the, of the property, that land, during land disturbance permit, we will require that the frontage improvements be installed with this. So the widening of the sidewalk, the landscape strip along Old Milton Parkway, the tree saves. This, these, these open space areas will have to be provided. The only open space I would say is with initially is we wouldn't force like this.
Right.
You know, before the actual, the building was, was improved. But the landscape strip sidewalk along the frontage, the streetscape, as well as the pocket park and the central park, all that would need to be tied to the residential down here.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Michael, I've got a couple of quick questions that I know you'll have the answers to. For the interparcial connections. Is there presently anything that is already planned or in place that would hook up to those connections?
So yes, with the, so Chelsea Walk, when it was approved, the non-residential portion, so the front, the part, the parcel up front along Old Milton Parkway was required to provide interparcial access to the west. So they do have that on their plat, that there's interparcial access. That's why the applicant has interparcel at this location here.
Okay. So it's designed to match with something in existence. Okay.
Yeah. This, they did show interparcel here. We went ahead and just left it. We do think that it's probably unlikely that the plastic surgery building will be redeveloped anytime. But at some point it may, so there might be an opportunity. And this development, you know, to potentially get rid of a curb cut and have that come through here to the light would be a much better solution. Fewer curb cuts are better for pedestrians.
Right. And speaking of pedestrians, the, the front pocket park, I don't see any dedicated pedestrian access there. And it's being right next to the entrance to this development. I would take it that cars, given that's a rounded turn, would be coming in at some speed. We're not protecting the pedestrians getting to that pocket park. Any plans around that?
So I did talk to our transportation engineer. He said that based on the very low number of trips that would be coming in, in, out of this site, he did, didn't feel like a dedicated pedestrian crossing was, was necessary to get over here. However, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have a problem with that being, you know, if, if the board felt that we needed to add that as a condition, we could certainly add that as a condition. He would not require that pedestrian connection here, but he's, he's fine if it, if it's added.
Okay. And next question, I note happily the limitation on the hours of operation for the businesses in the front building. Deliveries, do they fall in that same category or would deliveries perhaps be occurring outside of those hours?
So the deliveries are not tied to the hours of operation. A lot of time deliveries occur early in the morning prior to businesses opening. So yeah, that does not, the hours of operation and the condition does not apply to deliveries.
Okay. So there's a potential impact to residents?
There, I mean, anywhere in the downtown, when you have, you know, properties so close together, yes, there's potential for when deliveries are occurring that there may be some noise associated with that.
The last question, and we had spoken about this, the, there is no requirement for a sidewalk in the residential area because an alleyway is, was what this technically is. Any opportunity to consider the addition of at least some designated walking area? Because alleyways, you know, are still cars.
Sure. And, and I did talk to Eric about that as well. And we do have many, you know, we've got a few developments throughout the city where we don't have dedicated sidewalks and people are, you know, because they're low-speed roads, they're basically walking in the road. And we have the enclave at Wills, at the corner of Wills and Rucker is an example of where we have streets that have the sidewalks built into the road. So they use just different pavers. This is a very similar situation where, you know, because of the very few trips that are generated here, we believe that that can occur within the road.
Okay. And last item, when we spoke, you had confirmed, and I just wanted to make sure it was mentioned here, the outfalls for these underground detention facilities will be to the south and west towards an existing waterway?
Yes. And I did actually bring something to show you. I did talk to Jill Bazanet, our stormwater engineer. And she provided me with some information to show to the board. So this is the property, the subject property is located here, 2385 Old Milton Parkway. So the property is sloping down towards the stream. The stream is on the adjacent property that the board considered a couple of months ago, Fisher Homes Grand Communities. So this is the corner of the applicant's property here. So the outfall will occur in this corner. I did mention this to the applicant and he may have some information. So you may want to follow up. But I believe their plan is to seek an easement on the plastic surgery, uh, plastic surgeons property in order to pipe the outfall towards the stream.
And if so, the success depends on whether they're granted that easement?
Yes. I mean, they could, and there's potential at this corner, you've got Chelsea Walk here and the plastic surgery here. I imagine that he's going to try to, you know, have no, try to avoid any kind of impacts at, at Chelsea Walk. They've got landscaping kind of in this area. But it does, it is dependent on that property owner granting it. There are other ways of outfall. And I did talk to Jill about that. There's a potential to do a level spreader at that corner of the property. They did leave additional green area in this area in order to address or to deal with the outfall at this location. They haven't given any indication that they would use a level spreader at that location. However, Jill did mention that she does have, she would require a 10-foot setback off the property line, which would really squeeze the ability to do that. So the applicant most likely is going to need to seek an easement from the adjacent property owners for that outfall.
Thank you.
Michael, can we go back to the question that Valerie was asking in regards to no sidewalks in the residential component? So you were describing the possibility of the roadway including having a, a section that is?
So what I was just trying to explain is that we do have situations in the city where we allow the sidewalk and the, the travel lane to be shared. In those, in that situation that I mentioned, Enclave at Wills, we, they use a paver system because they use their roads also for, they've got pervious pavement there for a stormwater benefit. What they do is they actually use different color pavers to denote the sidewalk along the edges. And then the travel lane kind of overlaps that sidewalk. So they're a shared situation. What I was trying to convey is that we do have these situations where those two facilities are, are shared. And when Eric looked at this, he did not feel because of the low number of trips that will be coming into this area that it would not be unsafe for pedestrians to walk through the alley in order to gain access to the sidewalk.
So, so he didn't, because he felt that way, there wasn't any, any conditions to require that type of system, the road system where it shares the sidewalk? Is that what you're saying?
He, he did not feel that that was a requirement here. We have other developments with alleys. There's no way that the sidewalk is not required in an alley section to begin with. And it's a very, it's a fairly limited area. I think at the enclave at Wills, the roadway section gets a little bit larger. So in order to do that scenario, I think that this may have to get larger, which I'm not sure they're able to accommodate without pushing these, you know, closer to the adjacent properties.
I'm, I'm struggling with it because this is a mixed use. So we've got, you can anticipate a lot of foot traffic going to the pharmacy, going to the, the coffee shop that's there. And it's downtown and we try to promote as much safe walkability as possible. And if I remember, I think that the site plan showed four-bedroom townhomes. So conceivably, there could be, you know, three cars per, per townhome. So you're, you've got over 20 cars kind of typically coming in and out of that particular alley. In addition to the pedestrians, the folks that are living there, we've got great amenity space, but we don't have a safe way to get to it unless you're walking in the street, in the alley. And it's, what is it, 20, 25, 20 feet wide, the alley?
Yeah. The minimum requirement is 20 feet wide, yes. Now I did mention to Eric that there may be potential to do like a striped crosswalk here. I know that doesn't help, you know, these units on the south side here. But we did talk about that and he would be, he would be fine with requiring that during land disturbance permit, striped cross, crossing at this location.
All right.
Of course, the applicant is, is here as well. So it may be something that they can expand on a little bit more too.
Yeah. I, I, I love the site plan and I, and I love the amenity space, but it's like, we've created this barrier between the residential and the access to it without, you know, a safe way to, to meander up to use the actual space and take advantage of the retail that's there. Just a couple of other questions I also have. Units five through eight, they back up to the 10-foot landscape strip, right?
Correct.
So it's not conceivable that those units would be able to do any kind of a deck off of?
Yeah. And we, the elevations that were provided showed an end of the townhome as well as the front. So we don't know what the, the rear inside. Of course, we've got conditions requiring in the addition, the four-sided architecture details and materials. But yes, there is very little room back here. The applicant has shown a, the minimum requirement is a five-foot landscape strip, but the applicant has shown a 10-foot landscape strip. We do not allow patios or decks to encroach on landscape strips. So, and, and based on the condition required, showing the 10-foot landscape strip, they wouldn't have room for these buildings. Now buildings one through four, units one through four, there's a little bit more room here. So they have the minimum requirement of the five-foot landscape strip. And there is some room here potentially for some somewhat shallow deck or, or patio on the rear of those.
My last question is regarding the pharmacy and the coffee shop. The condition doesn't address drive-through on either the pharmacy or the coffee shop. Is that something we should identify there as, as not being allowed or?
We could certainly put something in there just to clarify. However, I would say that we do have two different categories in the code with respect to restaurant. We have restaurant and we have restaurant with drive-through. So the conditional use is for a restaurant, not with a drive-through. We also are tying it to the site plan, which doesn't show any kind of drive-through facilities. We do only have one category for a drugstore pharmacy and we do know that some drugstore pharmacies have drive-throughs. I don't have any problem if the board would like to add something, a sentence there just to clarify. That would be fine.
Great. Okay. Thank you. I'm done.
Mike, I have a question on the Chelsea Walk. There was, there's some comments. They said, hey, the, essentially the townhomes in the back are going to be pretty close to our property. When those Chelsea Walk homes were built, did they, I did not drive back there. So is, did they build in their own landscape, scape strip at Chelsea Walk? Or did they just build right up to the, the property line?
No, they meant, they meant the requirement, it's, I don't know if it's, you can really see here on the aerial. There is a little bit of separation between the building on the south side of the property as well as the building on the east side. It looks like the building adjacent to the east side of the property may be a little bit closer to that property line than the ones on the south. But Chelsea Walk meets its building setbacks and required five-foot landscape strips along the perimeter of those properties. And this applicant actually exceeds it, the, the required landscape strip on the east and south side. So they're only required to do five. And he did make accommodations when he revised the site plan and provided 10. So he did provide a little bit more room there in response to those comments.
One thing too, on the parking or no, no sidewalks, is, is there any room for a gate? A little bit of a arm gate to make it where only the residents can get back in, into that area?
So the applicant's initial site plan did have gated access between the non-residential and residential portions. The size of the site just does not allow for a gated situation. We do require, Eric Graves would require a pass-by lane at, at a gate. So that if you are not able to gain access past that gate, you have the ability to turn around in your vehicle. And the site just does not allow for that situation. So they did request the variance to gate because we do not allow gating in the downtown. But we do think that this is a better situation without it being gated.
Any further questions? All right. We're going to ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation.
Good evening. Hi, Edon. My name is Michael Scandari and the pharmacist, I'm the owner of the pharmacy, North Fulton Pharmacy down on 501 South Main Street. And I've been a pharmacist for 35 years. I'm a pharmacist, my wife is a pharmacist and my daughter is a pharmacist. And my son is in process of medical school and he's going to be MD next few years. And I'm here, I want to give to the city and to the state, especially to Alfredo City and in North Fulton. One of the things about this property, the whole purpose is to do something for the city, something to make for the future of the city. Once I'm gone, the people can use it. And the whole purpose of this, to the community, I have medical, like a well star crosses street from me. And also on my east side, I think the north side property is going to be there. And I thought maybe to having a pharmacy in there, it would be a good idea to have the pharmacy and coffee bar and these people can enjoy and the people of the Alfredo can enjoy it. And having a residential in the back, that's give the opportunity for people who's going to work either in North Side or or well store, they can own that property and they can back and forth access to the residents. That's one thing. And, and having a pharmacy, because since I have only one, I used to have like 10, 12 pharmacy. Originally come from the DC area, Washington DC, but I'm getting retired. I slowed down and moved to Georgia, moved to Alfredo, I live in Country Club of South. And also I have a couple of property down in, in Alfredo, in downtown area, which I own that the whole property down on 501 South Main Street. Okay? And I'm planning to do the same thing here that I'm doing over there. To bring business and money to the city. That's the whole purpose is. And to grow in the city. That's the whole purpose. Because when I come here, I pay more taxes. People come here, they bring more taxes and more revenue to the city. And, and I have my architect, we design it, whatever the this staff wanted, we agree with them, we go with this stuff, whatever they ask. They asked me to save the tree. I got no objection to save it. I'm here. Whatever they, they're recommending it, I will do it. And whatever you guys want me to do it, I will do it. I have no problem with that. I'm, I'm just, I'm not a, what do you call it, a big developer. And I done a single-family house and stuff like this in the past. But this is a bigger stage. I have my own engineer, I have my own builder, I have my own architect. But I'm just trying to do something big for the city, which I came to this country back in 1979, 1980. And America been great to me. I went to school, I got education. I, I have four degrees. I have a doctorate in the pharmacy. I have a master in chemical engineering. I have a bachelor in chemistry. I got, this country gave me a lot. That's, that's a land of opportunity. I came here with nothing. Now you see I'm here. And if you give me another opportunity to build it for the city and for the community of this area, that would be awesome.
You have anything to add to that? You said a lot of good things.
I'm here, you know, I came here, I'm a foreigner, you know, I came here with nothing.
Where did you grow up?
I grew up in Iran and I came here right after the revolution, as you hear it. And I, I'm here, my father is, he works for the oil company, but he's, just he told me, Dad, son, you go America? I says, yeah. Says, they said, the watermelon is a $1. Just a piss. My salary is a $1 for nine people. How I'm gonna, how I'm gonna, how am I gonna to feed you? I said, Dad, you send me there, I'm gonna work and you don't have to worry about it. I've been, I've been very successful and it's, this country been great to me. And I'm so happy. I want to do it to the community. I want to bring it to the, that's why I have a pharmacy. I can retire. My pharmacy is educational. People comes there to get the service from me. I'm here to give to the city. I'm here to give to the society. I'm not here to gain. I already gained.
I can listen to you all night.
Thank you.
Thank you for those good words of encouragement. It sounds like he agrees with all the conditions of staff. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah. I, I don't know if, if it would be you or the gentleman that's with you to address the concerns that you've heard us describe about the, you know, connectivity for pedestrians to be, the folks that are residents in the eight townhomes, safely connecting to the open space with not, you know, walking through an alley that's really unprotected for them. Is there?
I don't, I don't think there's too many traffic going on there. The only traffic is going to be there from residential. And I don't think from outside they would come inside, except the guests and residents.
Right. Yeah, I totally agree with you.
And then, they don't, I don't think they would walk up there. There is no reason. They have a parking up here, they can park. I mean, I don't know, they go to coffee shop or something. I don't know what is your concern is, because this is not a big place they can, people can get out of there.
My concern is you probably have 25, 30 cars within that community that are going to be using a 20-foot wide alley, right? To come in grass and egress. And in addition to that, you have residents that will be walking to your coffee shop, hopefully, or to your pharmacy, or walking their dogs to the civic, public, the pocket parks. And there is, they're in the alley with the cars. They're in the alley with the pickup trucks, they're with the residents that are there. Typically, if you look at Chelsea Walk, which is very similar to your development, right? In the sense that there is a pad for an office, and then there's residential, there are sidewalks on both sides of Chelsea Walk as you come in. And then, once you go by the pad for the building, there continues to be a sidewalk all the way through the development. So, there's
We can, we can put a sidewalk there. I mean, there shouldn't be any issue. I don't think, would there be any issue to put a sidewalk there?
The way we have it, the lane is 24 feet wide. And then, between the lane and the building, we have 20 feet. The idea is to, we could have a contagious sidewalk next to the lane. What that will be doing is reducing the landscape we have in front of the, of each unit. But you can do that.
So, you're willing to consider, and I don't, we don't want to design it here, but I think what I'd like to hear from you is, is an agreement that some sort of access, pedestrian?
Yes, we'll want to sort of show it in the plan. We think we have
You think you've got the flexibility to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
What it will do, it will be going across each driveway leading to a townhome. But it will be, so it will be connecting right across from each driveway leading to a townhome. We can't, we don't have the ability to put it on
The landscape side, right. Right. Can you talk about the question that we had about the arrow for the stormwater management facility next to unit one? Is, is the stormwater?
I already, I have been talking to the, to the neighbor next door with the plastic surgery, and I think they would allow us to do user easement to do it in that area. I don't think we would have any issue to do easement.
So, my question is, is the stormwater management area, is it, is it in the green space where the, where the arrow shows it? Or is it in the alley?
We do have the two aspects of that. One is underground detention, which you're showing at the end of the alley. And then, the green area is actually, we're anticipating, the civil engineer has looked at it, but he hasn't gone into actual design. And we're giving him area where he can use that as, either as a swell or allow his pipes, because if he does any piping, that is going to require easement, and that continues to, into whatever storm system we're going to have. So, the idea there was to allow for that by pushing the buildings away and pointing out that that's the intent of that area.
But if you see it, it is in the green area. It's not in alley. If you see that red arrow there.
So, that's, that's what we, the question was, because Michael had thought maybe the arrow extended longer than it should have. But you're saying that was, that's correctly depicting it?
Yes.
And, and the facility is still, it's, hasn't been decided yet as to what type of facility it'll be, whether it's underground or bio-swell or?
At that point, we do have, we're going to have underground detention at other parts of the development. But at that point, we might not need that, we might not need underground detention at that point. It might be a bio-swell or
Right.
Something of that nature.
So, that's to be determined?
Yes.
Right. My last question is not to do with the site plan, just out of curiosity. The coffee shop and the pharmacy are called Avalon.
Avalon, yeah.
So, do you, do you have to get permission from Avalon to?
No, I don't think so. Because it's gonna, it's not gonna be like Avalon. It says Avalon Pharmacy. Like, we have a North Fulton Pharmacy, North Fulton Compounding Pharmacy.
Right.
I already, they had my lawyer and looked into it. It shouldn't have any issue. And the coffee shop is going to be, it's not going to be just Avalon. It's going to be Avalon Coffee Bar, because it has a hyphenated name on it. When you have two different names, hyphenated, it shouldn't be an issue. I already got, what do you call it, the LLC on both of them. I applied, and it got accepted through the SOS. Georgia, when you apply for, yeah, yes. Yeah, they did, they didn't have no issue with it.
Okay. That's interesting.
Okay. And also, you guys mentioned about building it. I have a plan to build the whole thing at the same time. I don't have no plan to part of it and not part of it. I just want to get over with it at the same time. One shot.
My last question is, are you comfortable with putting in a condition where the drive, the pharmacy does not have a drive-through?
I don't have any drive-through pharmacy, even the one I have right here. I don't have intention to put a drive-through there, no.
Thank you.
Because this wouldn't be safe. And the delivery, the delivery, you guys mentioned something about the delivery. The delivery, it does happen only during the office time, the pharmacy delivery. I mean, I don't know, when you mentioned something about the delivery, you mentioned the delivery from the pharmacy or the drug delivery or people bringing things to the facility. I don't, I didn't?
I think it was, it was referred to in regards to the commercial buildings and the delivery of supplies and that type of
That's going to be on daytime, during day, when they are open. When they close, there's no delivery in there.
Hi, I have a suggestion for you, since I have some experience in community traffic calming and pedestrian safety. In regard to improving the opportunity for the homeowners in your townhomes to connect to the Central Park and the sidewalk that already exists on the left side of that development. There's a concept called a raised crosswalk. It's basically a low-speed hump with a striped crosswalk across the top. That gets you two good things, better visibility for your pedestrians, and it slows drivers coming into the residential alleyway so that they're maybe a little less likely to come in hot, you know, at too high a speed. So, it's just a suggestion for you, something to think about as you develop that.
Yes, definitely. I mean, I'm going to be talking to my architects and my engineering regarding those.
Very good.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any question or?
No, I'll just say, I, all my questions were answered, but from where we were in October to now, I think you really took the suggestions of staff, and really, the plan is so much better.
Thank you.
So, I'd really love to see all the greenscape that's been saved and all the different things that you included. So, thank you.
Actually, I talked to my architect, and I told him that anything the city tells you, you gotta listen. Anything the staff tells you, don't say. Whatever they want it, just do it. Don't worry about it then. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it then.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open this up for public comments. Anyone would like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
We have Mr. Edward Bots coming forward.
Good evening. My name's Edward Bots. I'm with my wife Cheryl and my neighbor Ken. We live in Chelsea Walk. We have the last unit. And one of the concerns, well, the first thing I do want to say, I apologize. Thank you very much for what you do with the city. I've lived here for 16 years. I'm a retired firefighter from here in Roswell, from here in Alfreda. I've been in Roswell for 28 years. I know what the whole planning, zoning, and all that craziness happened. So, I, I do appreciate what you do. And also with Ms. Cook, I've known Ms. Cook for many, many years, and especially Mr. Woodman. He has been very receptive to anything that we've done, because we first talked to him when they were doing the project on the other side of the medical building that got deferred. One of the issues, and I do thank the developer because he did, he addressed everything, like you said, from the first one to this one is just unbelievable, very, you know, our concern with, you know, the closeness to Chelsea Walk. But one of the things that with our property, we had concerns with the first development that was going to go in next to the medical, is we are down at the end of that, that slope. The Providence Group had to do extensive landscaping and irrigation to all those homes that were on the back side. When we purchased our home two years ago, the backyard was, was a mess. It was wet forever. And they finally had to go in and dig behind all those homes and put in this huge French kind of drain, I think it's a French drain. And that drain comes through those properties. It comes into my yard, and it goes down, and it goes out pointing toward this development. So, I, I've never really seen what type of water really comes out of it, because I guess with a French drain, it really, it doesn't come out that forceful. But I could tell you though, with the medical building, when it rains, all that water comes down at the end of the medical building, it just comes right out the drain. So, our property is kind of right in that corner. We're catching the water detention possibility from that other development that's deferred. We're going to probably catch the water coming in from here. So, you know, that is one of our concerns, that, that water management there because of the stream and what they're going to do. So, I'd just like to see, taking the whole picture on what's being developed in that area. We, we're 100% for this development. We think he did a great job with our concerns, and we think it'll be a great development. And I was told if I speak here, I would get free coffee for a year. But, you know. But, he opens at 8:00. I'm at work by 8:00, so, you know. But, but again, thank you very much for what you do, and thank you very much for what you've done with the development and community development also. Do a great job here. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? If there is no one else, anyone in opposition? I'll follow up, hold your peace. All right, I'll close this for public comments. Do you have anything else to add before I turn this over to the board for discussion?
I just wanted to, you know?
Would you come forward so you can be recorded?
This is something different. On Saturday, there is a big soccer game going on. We all have to go for USA. Okay, there we go. That's all.
I'm a big soccer fan.
No comment. Thank you. I'll turn this over to the board for discussion and our motion. I am just going to start and say that this is, it's a great application, a great response from the applicant, thorough presentation by Michael, and I wish most of them go like this. I just want to make a comment regarding the accessibility and sidewalk. I, I do agree with Eric that for a development like this with very few vehicles, a sidewalk is not necessary from a safety perspective. It is nice to have, but not required because of the low traffic. In addition to that, the distance between, if there is a curb, and the front of the building is so small that if you put a four-foot wide sidewalk and you're trying to accommodate parking for two vehicles, you're going to basically make that sidewalk useless because you have to get back on the road. A lot of subdivisions in Alfreda with many more dwelling units do not have them. But if the applicant is willing and able to accommodate it on the street, whether it's by striping or by using pavers, that's fine. In addition to that, maybe having crossover, crosswalks for pedestrians between the residential and that Central Park area, and then across from the pharmacy, coffee shop, to the other park at the front, that would only enhance public safety. And from what I'm hearing, they're willing to accommodate in recommendations that do improve public safety. And those are the only comments I have.
I have one comment that, from public, personal experience, we had an undeveloped area behind our home lot, that, from which we got a lot of groundwater during heavy rains. And when that lot was sold and developed, one of the biggest requirements of the developer was to properly manage and detain groundwater. I will say this, they, they did it properly, and it was under the city's guidance so that our groundwater issue is actually remediated, so that a developed area is actually redirecting water that would otherwise be running along the ground, right into your backyard. Hopefully, this, if they do it right, they'll redirect it away from your low point. I'm very much hopeful that the city will do, as it always has done, a quality job of making sure that what is engineered will help and not hurt.
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank the applicant. You have a very inspiring story, and thank you for sharing that. I, I agree that, I wrote down what you said. One of the things you said was, whatever you recommend, I will do it. And as my fellow commissioners have said, that is kind of music to our ears, because oftentimes, we have to mediate between disconnects between staff recommendations and what the developer wants to do. So, thank you for that. And like I said, I, upon my review of this, I think it's, it's very, very clean, and your cooperation and collaboration with the staff was clear. So, thank you for that.
Along the same, same lines, but on the stormwater management. Mike, you feel like that the city has adequately addressed that stormwater management, because it seems like that's a real big issue in the, with the development going on in the whole city. I know in other places, we've reviewed that too.
Yeah, and there'll be a more detailed look at this. If the applicant is approved, the next step would be the land disturbance permit. They'll have to do hydrology study and civil plans, and that's where they're going to get into the meat and potatoes of the stormwater and the, the necessary stormwater capacity that they need in those underground facilities.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion
Okay.
to approve Z-22-14/CU-22-08/V-22-27-2385 Old Milton Parkway, subject to the 28 conditions as reviewed by Mr. Woodman with two minor adjustments to condition number two. I would make a change to the very last sentence in condition number two and add, "The non-residential buildings and townhomes shall have four-sided architecture materials and details." And in condition number 26, I will offer to add a sentence to the existing sentence, "Drugstore pharmacies shall be limited to a retail pharmacy, and restaurants shall be limited to a coffee shop," period. "Neither conditional use shall have drive-through facilities," period. And that is the end of my motion. I'll second.
All right, a motion has been made and properly circled. Any further discussions?
I'd just like to compliment the applicant. It is inspiring to hear your backstory. It really is. Well, I believe the same. My mom came here in the 50s, and she tells me that all the time, and I certainly appreciate that. So, it's, it's great to hear that enthusiasm, and thank you for, for investing in our city, and good luck with your project.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion careless unanimously. Council will consider it Monday week, the 12th. Second item on the agenda is CU-22-11, Jean-Claude Salon/312 Maxwell Road, Suite 500. And Michael is presenting again, for some reason. Okay, I got it back.
Thanks for having me, Mr. [inaudible].
All right. Bye.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The next applicant, which is Jean-Claude Salon, is requesting a conditional use to operate a beauty shop in 1,100 square foot suite within an existing building in the Colony Park offices on South Main. Park offices on South Main. The business provides image and hair consulting service services with seniors being the targeted customer. Have the location map on the overhead. The property is located at 312 Maxwell Road, near the southeast corner of South Main Street and Maxwell Road. The highlighted area represents the Colony Park offices on South Main. It's an office condominium park, developed with 16 two-story office buildings, so low-rise office park. There are a variety of businesses occupying the park currently. There are a mix of medical offices, professional offices, a medical spa, commercial schools, insurance agencies, bank, law offices, and financial services. Subject property is Zone O and I Office Institutional, of which a beauty shop requires a conditional use in that zoning. Jean-Claude Salon is a new concept offering beauty services, including image and hair consulting, and it's by appointment only. As I mentioned, the suite, and let me just go to the site plan. So this is the entrance to the office park off of South Main Street. This is Maxwell right here. So as you enter the park, it's one of the first buildings when you come in. So that directory, if you've ever been into this office park, there's a directory in this location here with a variety of the businesses that exist within the office park. And then if you, as you come a little bit further down, this building right here is where the applicant is proposing to go in on the first floor of that building. The parking within this development was based on professional and medical office parking requirements, of which the applicant's business would have the same parking requirements. So there is sufficient parking. They're about, and I went out to the site and looked at the parking, and there are about 50 parking spaces within 100 feet of the applicant's proposed location here. Hours of operation proposed for the applicant's business is Monday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the applicant currently anticipates just one employee herself for this business. This is a street view photograph of the building that the applicant is looking to go into. And again, she would be on the first floor of that building. We did look at the review criteria for a conditional use, and we do believe that the proposed business would be compatible with the surrounding businesses. And I did name the the variety of of different businesses within this office park. So we do believe that it would be compatible. The applicant's business is by appointment, which is very much similar to the other businesses operating in this office park. We did show this item to the public at the community zoning information meeting on November 9th, and there were some public comments in support of the applicant's request on the sign-in sheet. And with that, staff is recommending approval of CU 22 dash 11 Jean-Claude Salon slash 312 Maxwell Road, subject to the following conditions. One, beauty shop shall be added as a conditional use at 312 Maxwell Road, Suite 500, and limited to no more than 1,100 square feet. Two, conditional use approval shall be limited to Jean-Claude Salon. No additional beauty shop use or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Three, beauty shop shall be limited to cosmetology services that do not require a customer to disrobe. Condition four, hours of operation shall be limited to Monday through Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And condition five, signage shall be limited to a wall sign no larger than three square feet and located beside the front door. No additional signage shall be permitted, no lighting window trim. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael? Seems like the room just emptied. Any questions? You did such a good job, Mike. We're going to ask the applicant, I assume you are the applicant, to come forward and make a presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Anna Rocha. And then the Jean-Claude Salon is going to be in 312.
And and who is he?
Alpharetta. He's my son and he says he's going to help me.
We are.
Yeah, he's.
Who's talking?
No, I could talk. And then that's in Alpharetta, 3009. And the reason that I'm here tonight is because I've been in this industry of, you know, like beauty, I've been helping. I like to serve people. I like to cut hair. I have a passion for it. But the most concern that I'm here today is because I want to target the senior citizens. All my career, I have a lot of good reviews for them. And then also, you know, when I was working all this time, I was thinking in my head, one day if I have the money, I will open a place just for senior citizens so they can leave me alone, work, you know, the time that I want to spend with them, the way that I want I want to treat them. Because most of the time, if we all realize that when the senior citizen goes to a beauty shop or a barber shop or a salon, they're kind of intimidated for the young people or that they're going to be there, but they have to be fast, you know? They have to come and in and out. So and that's that's the way that they, it shouldn't be that way to me, you know? It should be treated more with respect, with affection, with compassion, with kindness. Because, you know, they're elder, they're older than either, they were here before than us. So in my head, all the time, I was thinking, one day I want to open a place just for this. It's not just lucrative. It's more to be, to have a service, to do something to import to the community. And the reason that I choose Alpharetta is because I was working just for him on Highness Bridge and also on Milton, I was at the ballroom. And all the time, all my clients are senior citizens. So I know people in this area. And I, and the reason that I choose Colony Park is because in the, by the pandemic, most of the places that they were packed, you know, like renting, right now is not that that many people that wants to rent because everybody does in the virtual, at home, they work. So this place was not that, it was not that expensive. And it's bigger and it's large and it has access for handicapped and rails. And the bathroom has also, you know, for handicapped so they can go and and stay there and they feel comfortable, they feel, you know, like home, they don't feel with pressure, they don't feel discriminated. I'm not discriminated to the young people. It's just that I want to make sure, I want to make the point that it's going to be most target for them. And that's how I want to report to the community.
That's very good. How how long have you been in the industry?
I cut hair since I was 13.
That's not long ago.
That was a long time ago. My fa, I'm from Ecuador, South America.
Okay.
My father came to this country to work for the Air Force 37 years ago. So he's a veteran, 37. He's retired now, he's 87. And also because he's also a senior citizen, he inspired me also as well to know, to to do the service for them and to make it up for them. That's all I can say. And this is, and this right now, probably, it seems like maybe it's just a dream, but tomorrow, maybe 10, 20 years from now, we all going to say, I wish it could be one place like that, where we can go and have like rest and be comfortable, you know, without just having a good time and have a haircut. It's not going to be like extensions, color, nothing like that. It's going to be a cleanup, it's going to be a consulting, being with them, offering services and talking like kind of, it's kind of therapy because they want somebody to talk. They want somebody to be there for them, not just a haircut, not just pay you money, give you a tip. No, it's more like a bond, like maybe like a find a good friend, somebody that you can talk, that you don't know him, I don't know him, but he can tell me whatever they feel inside. And we talk, that's all I can say.
Seems to have a passion for this and that's very, very good.
Yes.
Does your son want to say something? He had notes with him and.
Because I was nervous, he said, if you don't want to talk, I.
He was tapping you on the back. Have a great son.
Oh, thank you.
You have anything to add to what your mom just said?
Um.
Please.
Sir, I just came here to talk, like, just help my mom out, make her proud and everything. I just want to talk about how my mom, you know, she's an excellent hair cutter, you know? She she cuts my hair, you know? I don't like it being cut that much, but I let her cut it anyway. She's an excellent hair cutter, you know? I've been really thinking, I think her idea, in my, in my opinion, is an amazing, just overall good idea for the community in Alpharetta and just everything. And I think senior citizens is a good topic to be, like, taken into consideration on because, you know, not many places have an idea like cutting hair for senior citizens, right? You don't just normally see like something like that.
How old are you, if you cared to share that with us?
Sir, I I just turned 14 in October.
Going to go a long way.
We're very impressed with you. That's why I asked you for your age. You have a great son.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I do. I have to, I admire your passion for seniors. I think it's a, they call it the silent generation, people just kind of forget that they're there. And I have a mom who's 91 and she goes to her salon on a pretty regular basis and she's in a comfortable environment, it's not in Alpharetta, but I know how important that comfortable environment is for her and her experience there. My question is, how are you planning to market to the senior group? I know you have a website and if my mom is any representation of that group in the 90s, they're not online much. So how do you plan to get your services in front of that particular customer?
Okay, here we go. Like at the beginning, I say that I'm not doing just for lucrative way, but also to have a service. So the general haircut, I charge $40. For senior citizens, it's 22.
So word of mouth is, that's part of it?
Yes, for her, you know, so they're going to see the prices and they're going to come. Well, and if they, and everybody wants to come, it's going to be more expensive. But for them, you know, because most of them, they retire, they don't have a job, they, you know?
Limited, fixed incomes, right.
They don't have it, so I'd be happy to help them to clean up, you know, just something and make them feel better. And, you know, some, some of them, they are very depressed because, you know, they, I am, they don't have, you know, the the ways to go to a place, you know, to to have a cleanup or to talk to them. But once they do, once I cut her hair and once they know, they have the feelings, they are so happy. They're like, you know, and that is the price, that's priceless. You can't buy anything, the happiness that they have, and that's how I get paid.
One last question. So the, I see that you have a website up already?
Oh, this is, no, I don't have it. This is what happened, is that the, there was a website from probably like four, four months ago, and they instead of put the, this address, they put my house address. So we told them not to do it because I had a partner with me. But when they, when she saw that there is the, you know, the the permits, that they not not allow us or anything like that, so she left. She decided not to go because she wants to make money and then she said like you, I mean, I'm kind of like, I'm 50, I'm 51, I'm going to be 52. This is going to be my retirement, just to do something that I enjoy. That website is, it has my address, if you can see it. It has my house address.
Uh.
Google made a mistake. We were going to put it, but they cannot take it from Google. We've been telling them not to, I mean, to take it out, but they they haven't.
So my question is, the the website on your homepage, it says Jean-Claude Hair and Image Consulting.
Yes.
At Avalon.
Oh, yes, they made a mistake as well.
Okay, so is your, so your, is your intention to keep the at Avalon?
No.
Description?
Because it's not in Avalon.
Correct, right.
It's not in Avalon and it's not even in downtown.
Close, right.
It's in Alpharetta Highway.
Right.
So that's Google, you know? And I told them I'm not paying for it. So they say they were going to take it out, but they haven't taken it out.
Okay, but that will happen. Got it.
Yeah, that won't happen. And as you can see, it's my, my house address, that they were trying to sell as a package, but we were telling, you know, you got to wait. Yeah, I mean, no one has used.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Senora Roja, thank you for this wonderful idea. And you addressed my only concern was things like grab bars and, you know, safety access for older people who might be less able, less mobile, and that's terrific. Sounds like you've thought it all through. And, you know, there's a chance I'll be one of your clients.
Yes. Yes, that's the only reason also I got the, I got this suite because it has access for handicapped, it's in the ground level. And the owner one, this is a, is a very, very nice person. His father also is a senior citizen, is, I think, is 90, 91, I think. He's really, really nice and then he comes and, you know, we talk to him and everything and he's so happy, happy.
Well, following on Commissioner Richard's comments, if you were to, and you've probably thought of this, introduce yourself to, there's quite a few assisted living and memory care facilities in the Alpharetta area and probably more to come. That's probably a wonderful opportunity to connect with potential clients.
Yes, we were thinking, you know, some of, no, three, three of my clients, they live in Village, is a, is a senior citizen, live in Alpharetta Highway. And then, you know, I have a lot of followers, a lot of friends.
Well, then it sounds like you.
That's why I said my, my schedule is based, you know, is basically, they, they have to call me, they have to make an appointment. And my clients, my senior citizens are already there, so I don't think there will be space for more people than I can do because it's only me and sometimes maybe someone to help me and that's going to be, it's, I can't have more than five or six people a day, so.
Well, thank you for having already addressed my only question, so good luck.
Thank you so much.
Any questions from the left side?
No.
All right, thank you so much. I don't see anybody in the audience. Your son has already commented. You have something else to add?
I guess, but no.
Okay, thank you. So I would just turn this over to the board. You can have a seat. If the board has any questions, they can come back and ask you, but there are no further questions at this time. All right, I will turn this over to the board for discussion and our motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, oop, I'm reading the wrong one, sorry, hold on. I lost it. Here we go, sorry. Motion to approve CU dash 22 dash 11 Jean-Claude Salon, 312 Maxwell Road, as presented by staff and including the conditions as presented by staff.
Motion has been made and properly circled. Any further discussion? Michael?
I may have missed it, but did we open for public comment? I know that there's no public comment. I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record.
I mentioned it was pointless to ask.
All of us, I missed it.
With no public. All right, I'll own that. If there are no further discussions or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. It's going to go before City Council on December 12th. Thank you so much.
Good job. You should be proud.
Great job.
For your son, too. Very good. The last item.
Can I shake your hand, sir?
Yes, you can, absolutely. I I'm honored.
Pleasure meeting you.
Pleasure meeting you, too.
How do you rest? You did it.
You, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. The last item on the agenda is PH dash 22 dash 15 Unified Development Code text amendments, tree conservation, landscape, and buffer requirements.
Thank you, Chairman. The last item before you is consideration of a text amendment to Unified Development Code subsection 3.2.8, which is tree replanting, buffer, and landscape standards. And specifically, we're proposing that specimen trees and trees of quality, which are located in the front building, which are located in building setbacks along certain streets in the downtown, be conserved. And you can see that we've added this to section 3.2.8 K to preserve. And you can see that we've added this to section 3.2.8-K, to preserve the character in existing tree canopy within the downtown overlay. It is desired to maintain good quality trees. Specimen trees and trees of quality within the building setbacks along the roads listed shall be conserved. And the roads we've listed, I'll put up the map within the overlay. So the blue depicts the downtown overlay, and then the red are the specific streets that we have listed. And they're the main streets, which include Academy Street, Canton Street, Church Street, Coming Street, Marietta Street, Mayfield Road, Milton Avenue, as well as Roswell Street. We didn't include Thompson Street, we did discuss that internally. And the reason we did not include Thompson Street is because that's mostly redeveloped, and there's 10-foot front setbacks. And we've already seen some of the developments that are replacing trees, that are very close to the front, and I'm thinking about Boise, which was the first development that was built. And some of the trees that are very close to the front of the house, those are already getting removed or replaced. But what's important to note about Thompson Street is, are the required street trees, that's between the roadway and the sidewalk. So those cannot be removed, because those are the street trees. So what we required along Thompson was Elms, larger trees, so that you're going to get a very large canopy over the roadway, but they're actually between the road and the sidewalk. We also didn't include North and Main Street, of course, that is, and Old Milton, which are the G dot roadways. And although they're putting in the wider sidewalks, the 12-foot sidewalks, we do believe that additional landscaping will be added eventually on, behind those sidewalks. But you've seen some of the new development that's being constructed, and they're being constructed within 10, 20 feet of North and South Main Street when they're rebuilt. A lot of the trees that we're looking to save on, we've found on North and South Main Street, are really on the sides of the buildings, sometimes in the rear. So that is why we didn't include North and South Main Street. The big tree save, thinking about the office building that's close here over by Coming Street, that's under construction, it's three stories under construction, the tree save was on the side of the building. And that's because we also have all the overhead utilities along North and South Main. So that's some of the reasons and the considerations, and open to any questions you may have.
Yeah, I do have a question. So in the packet, it said increase in requests was what spurred this?
We've seen a lot of development activity. Increase in requests is not what really spurred it. I mean, we have had comments from residents, I think they've even been here, when we were talking about the overlay for the private, not the private, but the interior local streets. We've, of course, established some different overlays, but we have had a lot of requests along Canton Street for tree removal, and you are seeing a lot of redevelopment. But the reason we're coming forward is in order to preserve that canopy. I mean, it's within the downtown, some of these areas that we're showing the preservation is actually known as the Garden District. We don't have signage depicting where the Garden District starts, which is that Milton Avenue runs along Canton Street. So it's in order to preserve that character of the downtown.
And I completely agree, and will be supporting this, but I think there's also a sense of practicality, too. As we saw with one of the applications this year, with the three trees that were over the dentist's office, and while they possibly could have been fine, the age and everything, there wasn't a practical reason to keep them. So I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a box.
Sure.
Doesn't allow for a practical approach for the tree that's already at its life expectancy, it might not make sense to keep, when we can get a better tree that's going to last longer, so...
Right, that's a great point. And we do have definitions for what trees of quality are considered within the tree ordinance, and we also, of course, require an arborist report for specimen trees. So it wouldn't be conserving all trees, they would have to be considered a specimen. Specimen is not just the size of the tree, it actually considers the health of the tree also. So we would be addressing that. And then, of course, if there is a better tree to save on the property, we would support that variance request.
So there is that flexibility, that's what I just wanted to make sure, because I think that, you know, we just need to be practical.
Absolutely, thank you.
Kathy, I had a suggestion, some additional verbiage that might be also additional ammunition, and I mentioned this to Michael. In other literature, when we discuss tree removal, there's a lot of emphasis on the value, the importance of mature trees in managing groundwater, stormwater. Really important going forward, and I think if you say, this is also important to help manage the redevelopment, the stormwater generated by redevelopment, that's extra fuel.
I agree, thank you.
What's the city, is Dave Shostak still the city arborist?
Yes.
Yeah, what is his part in playing, what does he play in, you know, walking around and saying, hey, that's a good tree, that's not a good tree, you know, as a representative for the city, to make sure that these are, these are preserved? Because I think this makes a lot of sense, you just start clear cutting, because in this development that we just approved, there's those big oaks, I've driven by there a lot, you know, and I know some of them are going to go, and, oh, well, that one's got a bad limb, or whatever. But, you know, you can't recreate 150-year-old trees, just, we're going to be gone by the time they get that big again. So how do we make sure that the city and the city arborist is involved in these, you know, kind of ahead of the curve?
We do require an arborist report, but we also, our arborist reviews that arborist report. We also have a list of certain recommended arborists to use, which we know have provided quality reports in the past. And our arborist does go out and look at the trees himself, and especially, and I'm not going to say he goes out anywhere in the city to look at an arborist report that's submitted, if it's within that recommended list of arborists. But we certainly are within the downtown, because several reasons. Of course, there's a character, of course, that you're trying to preserve. So it is something that he is following up with, and he will look at those arborist reports. And we've provided them before. We get a lot of open records requests about different tree removals, and we require all of that background work when requested.
Kathy, to follow that point, where you have an existing lot, an existing homeowner not redeveloping, and independently decides to take down trees, which we have a big problem with over where I live, that then becomes an enforcement issue. If a tree, if a homeowner were to take down a tree that you've identified as something you're really interested in preserving through this ordinance, or this redevelopment, or revision, would there be the opportunity to perhaps visit a stricter fine structure?
We couldn't charge more than the $1,000 per violation, but that's really not the most punitive part, the actual $1,000. We do have the section that requires the replant. So the replant, which is three times, for residents, three times the size of the tree that was removed without a permit, that can get pretty expensive, because you are required, let's say it's a 22-inch tree, 66 inches of tree replant, plus the $1,000 fine, and you have to replant with 4-inch caliper tree. So it can be very expensive. If you can't fit those on your property, then you would have to pay, you know, $800 in recompense per 4-inch caliper tree. So that can be pretty, get pretty expensive if it can't all fit on that property. So although there may be a $1,000 fine, by the time you had a 22-inch tree, if you couldn't plant that, you may be looking at about $25,000. So it can get very expensive, yeah.
Yes, but you have to catch them first.
Yes, I mean, if somebody reports that, and then, of course, you know, it's something we look at to see how many other trees they had on the property. We just had an incident where, you know, the homeowner thought that the tree removal company had the permit, and we saw, you know, the emails back and forth where they had told the homeowner that they had the permit. So there's a lot of things that go into our decision-making regarding the fines and violations.
Thank you.
I heard Commissioner Manley make a statement about a recommendation to add, was that a recommendation to add a statement and a K?
It was going to be optional, you know, I don't know that we need to vote on that here, it's your decision if you think that's an appropriate thing to add.
You can make a recommendation to the board, and I did hear Ms. Cook affirm it, to say it would be a good idea, that I just wanted to circle back and make sure that we don't just move on without addressing what you just said, unless you believe that you've already, you already have that language in the UDC.
I think we do, I was looking at the general section, that's under section 3, and it doesn't talk specifically about stormwater, but it talks about the quality of life and the contribution, so. There is a general statement, and you're right, you couldn't see that at the top of this section, but it does start off in section 3.2.1.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll certainly probably change my report a little bit for City Council to put a little more detail about the why.
I have, Kathy, a question. Can you put the map back up? Thank you for the insight on Thompson Street, because that was a question I had asked Michael about today, about why that was not included. But when I look at the, sort of where we're focusing on the streets that you've identified, it looks like, so there wasn't anything south of Old Milton Parkway that would, that's still in the overlay that would benefit from this? I'm looking at Devois Road?
And Devois was similar, and when you look at the Maxwell, some of those trees we were looking at are the wrong species, they're already growing into those units. So we believe that with the proximity, with only having a 10-foot front setback, that this is going to be too restrictive, that we need to look at making sure that we put the trees within the right of way.
Correct, true.
And we don't want to put that burden on those homeowners. Now, they'll have to replace, but you know, if we put this in effect, they wouldn't be able to remove it, replace it, and there may be a better species of trees.
That works.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You have a very comprehensive definition section of trees, just scanning through it. Any, anything else, any further questions? See, some people are getting ready to go to bed. It seems that it's nobody that I can ask to comment on, other than Michael and other staff. Going to ask the board for a motion and/or discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve PH-22-15 Unified Development Code text amendments, tree conservation, landscape, and buffer requirements as presented by staff.
And I'll second.
Motion has been made, and proper secreted, any further discussion? Hearing none, or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, and Kathy, you know what to do from here. Anything else the board would like to discuss?
January, what's the next?
January 5th, that would be 2023. Our meeting is adjourned, see you next year.
Wonderful holidays to everyone.
Yes. Thank you. One other year. [inaudible].